I'll call the meeting to order. This is the special call meeting of June 3rd of the City County Planning Commission. And first we'll have the roll call, please.
Ma'am. Commissioner Balance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale? Commissioner Volker?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren? Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Everyone's had a chance to review the summary minutes of the May 20th meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? No corrections, I'd ask for a motion, please. And a second? Thank you ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Same.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Same.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Runner, I request that you order that the record tonight include all applicable statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for tonight's application, and the qualifications of each staff witness. Finally, I request that you administer those to those staff witnesses.
So ordered. Do you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Yes.
Thank you all. And it's so good to see you all down there. I want to welcome everyone. It's so good to have a meeting out from behind the mask. The subdivision and site development plans in the packets, commissioners, any questions on those? No questions, we'll move on to the letters of credit and performance bonds, six items on tonight's agenda. Any questions on those six items? No questions, then I'd ask for a motion, please.
Please do approve.
Thank you, I need a second?
Second.
Thank you ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am. Do you not have any unfinished business, new business that will bring us into our public hearing? The first and only item tonight, docket number 2021-13 Flume. Brian Gross has filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a tract of land containing approximately 16.725 acres, located at the corner of Stanley Rice Road and McKinley Road, from low-density residential to high-density residential. And also, that same applicant on docket number 2021-27 Z County has filed to rezone that same land from highway business to RM3, which is townhouse multifamily residential with a general development plan. And we'll have the staff report from Ms. Hurt.
Thank you Chair Runner.
Thank you.
It's great to be back. First in-person staff report in over a year, so hopefully I don't get stage fright doing this in person. We'll see. But we'll get started. So we had a pre-application meeting on January 27th for the property located at the corner of McKinley Road and Stanley Rice Road, just outside the city limits of Smiths Grove. And as Chair Runner mentioned, we're here to consider two applications this evening, the first being a future land use map amendment, and then if that is successful, a rezoning of the property. The current zoning is highway business. That is a typo in your staff report, so I apologize for that. But the property was rezoned to highway business in 1979. The current use of the property is agriculture. And the current future land use designation for the property is low-density residential. The proposed amendment to the future land use map is a request to high-density residential, and those categories are referenced on page two of your staff report. The low-density residential future land use category is comprised of single-family areas up to four and a half dwelling units per acre. The higher-density, or the high-density residential future land use category allows for multifamily housing in excess of eight dwelling units per acre. Looking at LU 1.1.4 of the comprehensive plan, that outlines the procedures to amend the future land use map. The review criteria is listed in the central portion of page two. And in order to address this criteria, the applicant submitted the brief narrative that's in italicized text on page two for your reference. The planning commission should determine if this is sufficient information to address the criteria outlined in LU 1.1.4. Looking at the site characteristics review, I'm going to touch on the, jump to the proposed layout here. You'll see that the proposed, the proposed development includes multiple lots with the building and parking configuration shown on this preliminary development plan. The proposed development plan, shown graphically, depicts 288 units, while the development plan conditions allow up to 300 units on the property. You'll see that the parking is proposed along the adjacent single-family residential uses, that would be to the north or top portion of the screen, with buildings to be located central to the property and closer to Stanley Rice Road. We have also noted that there's a 25-foot minimum building setback adjacent to the single-family uses on the north side of the property. Looking at transportation infrastructure, I noted that there's frontage for this development on both McKinley Road, which is 14 feet in width, and Stanley Rice Road, which is 16 feet in width. Jumping down to wastewater adequacy, the staff has noted that the property is within 2,000 feet of sewer and will be required to connect if this development is approved. The Warren County Water District staff expressed concerns regarding sewer installation during the preliminary, preliminary review of this development during our comprehensive development review committee meeting on January 27th. Looking at the site design and compatibility review, let me jump back to the density map here. And in referencing this density map, you'll see that the adjacent multifamily development, that'd be to the left-hand side of the property outlined in red, the density for that development is 15.29 dwelling units per acre. Other nearby subdivisions have densities of 1.14, 1.45, 1.52. And the majority of the remaining residential uses in the area, if we jump back to the land use map, you will see our agriculture and rural, as you get further out from the city of Smiths Grove. The proposed density for the development before you this evening is 16.725 dwelling units per acre. And that's based on the maximum number of units proposed in the development plan conditions. Looking at building orientation, staff has noted that the majority of the existing buildings on Vincent Street have a front facade oriented toward Vincent Street, with the exception of the adjacent multifamily residential structure. And actually, that's worth noting here, is that the name changes from Vincent Street to Stanley Rice Road as you leave the city limits of Smiths Grove. So it's the same street, just has a different name. And so that's why we're now referencing Vincent Street. Staff has noted, or suggested, that new structures be oriented to face Stanley Rice Road and McKinley Road to complement the existing character and pattern of development in the area. And the majority of the buildings shown on the preliminary development plan have a side facade oriented toward Stanley Rice Road. Moving on to page four, we have our reference to section 314 of the zoning ordinance, which outlines the requirements for a traffic impact study. The applicants did consult with the Warren County Public Works Department, and the Warren County Public Works Department did not require a traffic study and leave a commitment from the applicant that the following improvements be implemented if the proposed development is approved, the first of which being that Stanley Rice Road shall be widened to match pavement width on Vincent Street between 22 and 24 feet. And second, that no more than three access points on Stanley Rice Road will be permitted, as shown on the preliminary development plan. Moving down to the proposed development plan conditions. Number one addresses sinkholes. Two includes considerations for the preservation of a portion of the existing trees along the northern property line. If we jump back to the aerial, we can see those trees. Number three looks at building materials. I'll read this one, there's quite a few things listed here. "All exterior facades of principal structures located on the property shall be constructed of wood, vinyl siding, brick, stone, or concrete-based siding, with no exposed, smooth, or split-face block above grade. Exteriors shall have a uniform color scheme so as to allow uniformity in appearance. No more than two brick colors that blend in style and color. No more than one roof color, no more than one trim color, and no more than three colors of vinyl or cement board plank siding that blend in style and color with all other exterior building products and color schemes. In addition, the subject properties shall have uniform plans with consistent and/or complementary roof lines and architectural details, including columns, gable brackets, railings, etc., and the development plan condition applies to the entire development." Number four deals with utility placement to be located underground. Number five sets a maximum number of units at 300. Six limits building height to two stories. Seven looks at access and roadway improvements. Eight requires a maximum of 75% lot coverage. And nine states that there shall be a maximum of eight lots. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, the staff evaluated 19 items. Of those 19 items, we found four of those items to be in compliance. There are 15 items that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance. The first of those being LU 1.1.1 and LU 1.1.2, which look at compliance with the future land use map. LU 1.1.3, which is our compatibility item. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development is compatible, including the proposed use, density, building orientation, location of parking, and location of proposed buildings. Next LU 2 and 2.1, which look at quality of development and character preservation. Next LU 2.1.1, which looks at adequacy and usability of open space. Next LU 214, PR 1.7 and NCR 1.1.6, which look at tree preservation. If I keep the aerial view up here, you'll see that there's an established buffer line of trees running along the majority of the northern property line between the proposed development and adjacent single-family residential uses. This buffer ranges in width from approximately 10 feet to as much as 270 feet, with an average buffer width appearing to be close to 30 feet. The applicants agreed in development plan condition two, that all existing trees which have a caliper of 12 inches or greater, measured at chest height, located on or within five feet of the northern property line will be maintained during development and construction on the property. So the planning commission should determine if the proposed development complies with these items. Looking at page five, sorry, page six. Moving on to LU 252, which looks at compatibility of infill development. Next LU 2.9, which looks at the character of the Smiths Grove community. Next HN1 and HN1.3, which evaluates character and pattern of development and whether or not the proposed development will strengthen nearby neighborhoods. And then last, HN2.1 and HN4, which evaluate location and suitability of the proposed housing type and if the proposed residences will enhance the array of housing options in the area. And with that, I will wrap up with our points to consider on page one. The first is that the planning commission should consider if the information provided by the applicant to amend the future land use map meets the criteria outlined in LU 1.1.4. If the future land use map amendment is approved, the proposed RM3 zone would be consistent with the future land use map in high-density residential category. Second, the proposed development complies with some of the site characteristics review criteria and some of the review criteria for site design, with items noted regarding road width, sewer adequacy, and natural features. And last, the planning commission should determine if the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area, including the proposed use, density, building orientation, location of parking, and location of the proposed buildings. I believe that is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
There could be eight lots, and then I don't know off the top of my head how many units per lot or something. Oh, yeah. I think on here, there's... Correct.
Rachel, a couple of questions if I may. One is, would you go back and review? I heard you say something about a sewer concern. Could you revisit that, make sure I understand?
And the applicant's engineer, I believe, is here and may want to shed some more light on this, but during our preliminary review of the project in our comprehensive development review committee meeting on January 27th, staff from Warren County Water District had expressed concerns regarding the ability of installing sewer to serve the proposed development. Now, I don't know the details behind the concerns...
So it could be that it's a forced main, or it's a pumping station issue, or something like that?
I'm not sure, but I believe the conversation was left with the applicant's engineer, where they were going to reach out for additional conversation after that meeting, and I don't know what those conversations outside of that meeting included.
Very good. And then, let's go back if we could and revisit density. There's a property, you said the property next door has a density of 15.29 dwelling units per acre, and the proposed here is 16.25 dwelling units per acre? Or 16.72 dwelling units per acre?
16.72.
And how, how is that property zoned currently, the neighboring property?
It's zoned general business. If we jump back to the zoning map.
So it's general business?
Yes. And it was developed under the general business zone that currently allows multifamily development utilizing the RM3 development standards in the zoning ordinance.
See.
And that property was zoned years ago.
Okay.
So that's why you wouldn't have seen an application for that property, because it was already zoned. Yep. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, 17.94.
For 18 units per acre. Well, it says DU per acre in the, on page three. That's why I was asking the question. Am I misreading that in the middle of the paragraph, under site design?
That's a typo. I'm so sorry.
So that's the acreage?
It is the correct density on, on page one, in the little box there. Yeah, my apologies.
Got it, got it. Thank you.
Rachel, this is a density question also. Because of the high density related to the project, did the developer during the review, would you all discuss anything regarding potentially reducing the number of units?
No sir. But you may be able to ask that question this evening.
Do we have any other questions? Applicant? Thank you ma'am.
Thank you ma'am.
Madam Chairman, if the applicant's not going to ask her any questions, I represent various neighbors from the Smiths Grove area. I would have some questions.
Yes, Mr. Broderick, go right ahead. Yes, sir.
Madam Chairman, I was speaking to my client today here. I apologize, I did not hear you offer the applicant an opportunity to ask Ms. Hurt any questions.
Oh, okay. That's, yes.
I understand completely, ma'am.
Yes, go, go right ahead. Yes, sir.
And will Ms. Hurt take those from her seat, I guess?
Okay, it's been so long since we've been here in person. First off, good afternoon, everybody. It's fantastic to see each one of you all in person in three dimensions, as opposed to seeing you in your Hollywood squares on your computer or TV screen. My name is Thad Pardue. I represent the applicant on this particular hearing. His name is Brian Gross. Mr. Gross is with me this evening. If you'll raise your hand, Brian, just so they know who you are as well. Thad Lucas is here, he's the engineer on this project. Just a few questions for Ms. Hurt. The, and I think you covered some of this in, in the staff report, as, as I expected you would, but just to reemphasize, this property as it's currently zoned is, is in the category of highway business, is that right?
Yes.
Do you know if there are any conditions or restrictions that currently bind what uses might be allowed on this property as it's in its current zone?
Other than just what's restricted by the zoning ordinance?
Yes ma'am.
No, there are no binding elements or development plan conditions?
There are no conditions or restrictions based on what uses are permitted in the, I guess, the use restrictions of the use table in the zoning ordinance?
That would be the only use, the only document that would guide the uses that could occur on the property would be what's allowed by the zoning ordinance.
So as it's zoned at this time, the property could be developed without any request for a flume amendment or a zoning map amendment to include such things as restaurants, hotels, retail, new and used car sales. Again, everything that would be included in the use table permitted for highway business.
Yes, that's correct.
That could currently...
May I interrupt you just for a moment?
Yes sir.
I want to clarify one thing that you're touching on here, and this is kind of what I asked earlier. So if the property next door is also zoned highway business?
General.
General business?
Yeah, that's an distinction, Mr. Graham.
There you go. I couldn't zero in on it.
It took me a while to, it took me a while to figure that out. It took me about an hour after looking at this thing, just to figure that out myself.
That's one of the main differences, is that in highway business, the zoning ordinance does not allow standalone residential development.
Which is hence the reason we're here, I guess. Because the, the property next door was, is owned and was developed by Mr. Gross as well. But I appreciate you asking the question, because that clarified it for me originally, and it may have clarified it for some of the other commissioners. And then in terms of hours of operation then, are there no limits on hours of operation as this property is currently zoned highway business?
Correct.
And as it pertains to the, the criteria that the commission must consider for an application to amend the flume, aside from the width of Stanley Rice Road, which Mr. Gross has committed in his DPCs to widen, are all other facilities and infrastructure in this area that are available adequate to support the development as it's proposed this evening?
The exception of the, the considerations we've noted for the sewer. And hopefully, Mr. Lucas, I can't see him, he's behind the, okay. I couldn't see if he was back there. Hopefully, he can help answer the question on the sewer.
And if I, if I told you Mr. Lewis, or Mr. Lucas was here and could address the sewer issue, aside from the sewer issue and the road which Mr. Gross has agreed or committed to widening, all other infrastructure that is currently existing is sufficient to support the, the project as it's proposed?
Knowledge, yes. Based on the feedback we received at the initial review of the project back on January 27th with our sister agencies.
And to the point, or the issue of compatibility or consistency of the proposed use with properties in the area. Looking at the, the existing zoning map, the property to the immediate, I guess, south of Mr. Gross's property is zoned both highway business and light industrial, is that right?
Yes.
And the property to the north is single-family residential?
Agriculture.
Okay. And to the east, it's agriculture, is that right?
Yes.
And to the west, it's general business being used as multifamily? And also, looking at not just existing zoning, but existing uses of the properties, the property to the north of this property is currently being used as single-family residential, correct?
Yes, and agriculture.
And agriculture to the east? You have commercial and light industrial to the south?
Southwest. Directly to the south is agriculture.
Okay. It's agriculture zoned as highway business to the immediate, right. And then use being multifamily to the immediate west?
Yes, sir.
So if we wanted to talk about, well, you would agree, that's quite the variety. I think we have just about every use category except public, is that right?
And there's not a public institutional use. But other than that, I think you named them all.
To the point of compatibility or consistency, one could develop this property in just about any type of use category and be able to point to at least some property, if not touching or in the immediate vicinity, that would be consistent with that, wouldn't it?
Commercial for the current zoning?
The...
The proposed multifamily.
With any use. Whether it's, whether it's a use permitted in, in a highway business zone or not?
I guess, I guess it would be fair to say that there are a variety of uses in the area, yes.
In the case of Mr. Gross's proposal to develop this with multifamily residences, that would be consistent or compatible with the multifamily residential that's immediately next door, is that correct?
That would be up to the planning commission to determine.
It would be the same type of use, if not?
It would be a multifamily use, yes.
And with this, excuse me, this property that Mr. Gross is proposing this evening being bordered to the north by single-family and agricultural uses, to the south by highway business and light industrial categories, would it be fair to say that if zoned for a multifamily residential use, that would provide some, or act as, in some ways, as a transition from your single-family agriculture to your light industrial highway business to the south?
Potentially.
Potentially. Thank you, Ms. Hurt. Those are all my questions. Thank you for answering them.
Yes, Mr. Broderick.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I represent various neighbors who live in the Smiths Grove area, and there are some questions that I want to ask. And I guess I'll address the first thing that Mr. Pardue addressed, is it relates to the highway business zone? My understanding is that zone was accomplished in 1979, 42 years ago.
That's correct.
And in 42 years, it's remained agricultural in use?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And when we talk about now, the density in the area, with the exception of the units that are right next to this property, so to speak, to the south, the density of the rest of the area is agricultural, or at the most, 1.5 units per acre.
Sounds correct.
So when we start talking about compatibility, I guess we do need to qualify one thing. Who owns the units directly next to this property?
The applicant.
Mr. Gross. And instead of 300 units there, or 100 units there, he has 24 units there. So when we start talking about dimensions and proportion of size, it's substantially larger than what he has next to it by 10 times. Maybe 15?
Acreage is certainly more, as far as this application is concerned, yes. 16.7 acres, yeah.
And, and the number of units? 24 as opposed to 300.
Yes, sir, that is a larger number of units.
Yes ma'am. So when we start, again, talking about compatibility, and if there's a suggestion that that unit that's to his, that he has to the south there is compatible with the area, when you go around the area, you have, could we go to the, could you put us up to the land use? Ben, I'll let you be the monitor here. So when we start talking about the land use in the area now...
What, the, the future land use or the current?
I'll do, I'll go that way. You got it there, I'll take what I've got on the screen. I'll go with it. When we talk about the density here now, we'll switch to density and we'll go back to land use in a second. The future land use map as we know it came in effect when?
The, the original comprehensive plan was adopted in, well, close to 2012, and then we had amended the map or reviewed the map. We're supposed to in 17. Every five years, we, we reevaluate the map.
So since 1979, when it was zoned highway business till now, the future land use map as we have it today has foreseen this to be a low-density residential area, isn't that correct?
Well, not since 1979. Just because the future land use map wouldn't have been in, in effect in 1979. But since the adoption of the comprehensive plan in 2012, the future land use map for this particular property is designated as low-density residential. Meaning that if, the plan has identified that if the property were to be redeveloped, that zoning or uses within the low-density category would be identified as potentially compatible for this area.
And, and in the last nine years, that's not changed any, has it? And in fact, the unit that he's talking to, to the south, was built when, do you know?
It's been in the last few years. I can't remember exactly when, but I want to say around, well, he may want to answer that here in a little bit, but it, it was fairly recently.
Okay. And, and so when we start talking about the low density, that's what the flume in effect today says? that's what the flume in effect today says, this should be a low-density residential area, correct?
Would say that, that that is a potentially compatible use, yes.
And I think we've tossed the numbers around, but the correct number per acreage for this is 17.94 units per acre?
Yes, that's correct.
A couple of other things that I noticed in the report, and, and nobody's updated you on the sewer, so we don't know about that yet, do we?
I'm hoping the applicants will have an update on that.
I see it's broken down in eight lots, and perhaps I didn't see this in the binding elements of the development plan aspect of it. I'll always call them binding elements, folks, I'm sorry, I'll never get out of that, that, that system. Anything about universal ownership, or is he going to be selling these lots off?
Honestly not sure. If he plans to retain ownership or sell the proposed lot.
Doesn't address that with you?
Correct.
Anything about providing for a homeowners association to control this?
No, sir.
Those are things that can be put in the binding elements of the development plan, can't they? And they're not there, are they? And as I understand it, the application that you have would allow vinyl siding also.
Yes, sir.
I have seen some information that would suggest that vinyl may have been removed, so has, has anybody provided that to you?
Nothing official.
Okay, so we don't have anything over, so right now we know it's also potentially going to be vinyl siding.
Under the, the current wording of the development plan conditions, yes, potentially.
The property, now can we, now can I go to the land use? And the land use as we see it in the area now is essentially to the property, let's call it on McKinley Road. The Stanley Rice Road is the road, we'll call it in front of the unit, and then when you turn down, you've got your pointer there.
Okay, here we go.
So that's the Stanley Rice Road, now let's go down the McKinley Road if we can. All right, so all that back there is single-family residential, is it not?
Agriculture and sing.
And by the way, who developed the single-family residential back there? Did Mr. Gross do that?
I honestly don't know, those homes have been there for quite some time, so I'm not, I'm not sure who the developer for that submitted.
And we know the density there is 1.5 to 1.52 per acre, correct?
That sounds right, hold on. Yeah, between 1.14 and 1.52.
So what would exactly, but next to that property on McKinley Road would be density of almost 18 units per acre as opposed to 1.5 units per acre, fair enough? When we talk about the LU 1.1.4 and the flume itself, the applicants made no reference to this being any public benefit at this point in time in their application, did they?
No, sir.
They didn't say this was inconsistent or there were mapping areas in the flume, did they?
No, sir.
Essentially what they tried to say in their application was, and you've quoted it at the bottom, that it's compatible. Is that right? But they didn't offer you any specifics on it, just the kind of general paragraph that says it's compatible, and we'll address, address it in the proposed development plan.
Yes, they referred to the development plan conditions.
And how does that address a change in the flume?
I believe they were trying to argue the third point there about compatibility.
I, I just didn't.
The, the third point under LU 1.1.4, I believe they were trying to provide supporting information regarding that third bullet point as to how the development's compatible, is my understanding, based on what was submitted.
And, and it doesn't say anything about that in their development plan, does it?
Other than just referring to the conditions which address some of the compatibility items that are referenced under LU 1.1.4, or at least the topics that are in that section.
When we have, this application was initially set for the last hearing or hearing before last. Has anything changed in terms of the application or anything they've offered to you to make any changes about your report?
No, sir, not, not officially, no.
Okay, and I take it then there's been some dialogue with you, has some offer been made about something?
Well, the, Mr. Perdue may want to speak a little bit more to that here in a little bit. I don't want to speak out of turn, so.
One thing, what about the reduction of the number of units, has that ever been discussed?
No, sir.
Okay, so what they have in the binding elements is 300 units, and the way it would be laid out is at this point in time on eight different lots, correct? One thing I, I, I heard you say, and I was talking about the positioning of, of the buildings themselves, the parking is going to be on the side next to the residential development, is it not?
Well, as, as depicted on the preliminary development plan, yes, but there's nothing that would require the parking or the buildings to be positioned exactly how they're shown on the concept.
On the con, did they offer any other renderings other than what we have here?
Yes, sir.
And I guess what I, the, the last thing I understood is when they talked about how it would be developed, there seemed to be some suggestion that would be developed in segments, is there anything?
I believe in our initial meeting, it was stated that it would be phased. If, if this were to be approved, it would not all be developed at one time, but phased a little bit at a time as the housing need increases.
And the fact that 42 years ago it was zoned highway business, today if they want to put 300 units on this particular location, they in fact have to have a change in the flume and then a zone change itself, do they not?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I will hear from the applicant, your presentation, sir.
Madam Chair, may I ask one more question? I'm looking for some additional clarification, I apologize. So this is for staff. Help me reconcile the apparent contradiction between low-density residential flume and an existing highway business zoning.
The future land use map, I guess is just a generalized map that would depict how property would develop over time as anticipated by the comprehensive plan, and so it's not always a reflection of the current zoning. And so it could be that, like we've mentioned, I think on a few occasions, that the property's been zoned since 1979.
So would, would my, am I missing something here? Or would it be fair to say that currently the zoning for this property is in, is in conflict with the flume?
Correct. That's not unusual, I guess. There are several instances with the future land use map where the future land use category may not represent or reflect the current zoning.
And, and that's helpful because it seems to contradict currently, and I'm trying to understand how much weight we give to that contradiction. So, and you said that that's not terribly uncommon, correct? Thank you.
With the current zoning that's there now, this is another question for staff, could they put single-family there?
No, ma'am.
Low, low res, low-density residential is multifamily, correct?
No, under the current zoning in highway business, you couldn't have any residential uses.
Okay. Okay, so right now it's zoned, and they want to change the flume, so the future land use they want to change to high-density, and right now it's low-density.
Yes.
But it's actually zoned it right now highway business.
That's right.
And there's no residential in highway business.
Not standalone, unless it's incorporated into a building as a mixed use on an upper story.
Okay.
You could put a hotel there, though?
Yes.
How large a hotel could they put there, I mean, how many units?
There's no restriction on height in highway business, so it'd really just be dictated by the parking and landscaping requirements and setbacks.
Several hundred hotel rooms.
Oh, my, stole my question, Commissioner Gaye, put a five-story hotel there, I suppose. Any other questions, and I'll proceed? No more? Okay, so some points were brought up in response to Mr. Broderick's questioning, and I want to address those in a certain order here. As it pertains to the development plan conditions, we have, I have this evening a revised set of development plan conditions that, that I can submit. I can have Mr. Gross come up here on the record and agree to these, but there have been a few changes. And I tried my best to get these to Rachel in time to get mailed out to you all, and logistically trying to get with Mr. Gross and his schedule to, to sign these, I just couldn't do it, so I just, I told Rachel I'd come prepared this evening to go ahead and, and kind of give you those revisions on the record.
Do you have those in writing?
I have a, yes, I have them in writing already, signed by Mr. Gross. The only thing I, I didn't think to do was make 13 copies for each one of you, you all to have. But I can, I can take, they, they pretty much mirror in number the ones that are in your staff report. I can just take you through which ones have been changed and how they've been changed, if, if that makes sense. So development plan condition number two, we've revised that such that it says that we'll preserve all trees having caliper width of 12 inches at five feet in height. Formerly it said at chest height, and that's a little subjective, depending on who you took out there to, to measure against. So we thought to, to remove any subjectivity, we would simply say all existing trees located within five feet of the northern property line having a caliper width of 12 inches measured five feet from the ground shall be preserved, so we did make that change. Number three, development plan condition number three pertaining to building materials, it was a typographical error, and we recognize that as it is written in your report, it would conceivably allow vinyl siding as a primary building material. We've removed vinyl siding as a primary building material. And I'm going to show you some photographs later to give you even a better example of, of, of what these multifamily structures will look like in reality.
Ted, may I interject one more question on three?
Absolutely.
You've also got wood as an exterior, and, and I suspect the intent may have been LP.
Moved that too.
Okay. I'm okay with if, if for some reason they want to do like LP smart siding or something, but if you'll take that out or if you're okay just taking it out, that eliminates the possibility. They would have to do like a hardy or, or equivalent masonry siding.
The way it reads now is brick, stone, cementitious siding, or similar cement-based materials. We've removed vinyl and wood.
Very good, thank you.
And again, I'm going to show you some photographs here in a minute that going to do more than my words can, can illustrate in terms of, you know, what the, what the actual structures will look like. So that was the, the revision to number three. There was a revision to number five, which dealt with the maximum, maximum number of units. And again, that was an error when it was submitted. We submitted a concept plan which showed 288, but a development plan conditions, a condition which permitted a maximum of 300. We've changed that to 288. You'll see in the concept plan, it, the conditions need to reflect the concept plan that was submitted, which was 36 units with, 36 buildings with eight units, so it's 288. So that slightly reduces the density, I think, down to like 17.2. Again, to make it more consistent with the property right next door, that this will be developed similar to. The condition number six dealing with height of structures, I believe it read originally multifamily buildings will be limited to two stories. This may be a matter of semantics, but I, that has been revised to say that all structures on the property should be limited to two stories in height. We didn't want there to be any suggestion that while the multifamily residential structures couldn't be over two stories, that there may be some ancillary structure related to the, to the development that may be three or four stories. So all buildings on the property shall not exceed two stories. And then the last one is, we, we made some revisions to number eight, but really it still says the same thing. We just tried to clarify it a little bit, and that, and I think eight maybe dealt with access points. Let me double check the number. Seven, I apologize. I had a note here and I thought I might have been mistaken. So what the new DPC says as it relates to access points is that access to the property shall be on Stanley Rice Road and according to the standards of the Warren County Public Works Department. Stanley Rice Road is an extension of Vincent Street, which begins at South Main Street, which is Highway 101 and runs east. We added that in there, again, Rachel brought that point up earlier, she kept referring to the Stanley Rice Road and Vincent Street. They are essentially the same road, one turns into the other as it leaves the city limits of Smiths Grove. And I just wanted to make that statement in that development plan condition so that if anyone were to pick these up objectively and read them, they would understand that when we refer to those two roads, we're talking about the same road. So that was, that was the only revision to, to number seven on access points. So, and everything else in the development plan conditions as they were submitted remain the same. So I have these, I have a copy, an official original copy signed by Mr. Gross, and am prepared to submit them into the record this evening if I could.
Can we still ask you questions about it before you submit it?
Yes, ma'am.
Who's going to maintain all eight of these lots? Are you going to have a homeowners association? Is each individual owner of each lot going to maintain all the buildings and all the, the open space?
If the lots are, do turn out to be individually owned, it will be up to the individual owners of the lots to maintain them. Correct. We tried to alleviate or address issues with exterior appearance and consistency in design, et cetera, through a development plan condition. But are going to leave it to the individual owners of the lots, not an HOA for the, for the property as a whole, but the individual owners to maintain each of their individual lots if they end up being, being individually owned. It sounds like that we can, we can commit to brick as the primary, as the primary building material, the only. You okay with that, Brian? But, but no more than two colors, or two color pallets or two colors of brick throughout the development.
That's kind of hard on a, on brick, because you're going to have 20 different shades of brown on brick.
It's true, but I mean, I think, I guess keeping it.
It's a personal choice, though. That's your choice.
Ma'am.
That's, I mean, that's a personal choice.
Well, no, I'm just saying if you have two colors, you could have, you could do a light pink and a dark, and a dark red as your two colors.
I guess I, that's a valid point. I guess the colors, to, to whatever extent we can, we can insert language into these conditions that, you know, and, but again, that's a little subjective. But I, I think our, our intent is to meet the, the spirit of what you're asking.
Absolutely, okay.
I don't, I don't think that in any way the intent of the development is to, is to create multiple colors that aren't consistent. And to the extent we can, we can add to or revise or amend these conditions to confirm that, we will. But I, I, I get exactly what you're saying, and I think that's, that is the spirit of what we tried to address in that, that DPC. But, but for the purpose of the record, we, we can limit it to brick as the primary. So that would remove stone, hardy boards. So that would remove stone, hardy boards, cementitious materials.
And that many units, I would see, or, 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 I don't think there are other ones?
I don't believe there is. No amenities, no amenities.
No open space for families or anything?
So, we committed to twenty-five percent open space. There isn't any intentional design of that open space, such as a park or a common area or things like that. But there is a twenty-five percent commitment to open space on the property. As it's proposed in the concept plan, there isn't any specific amenity that would encompass-
But it's fair to say that twenty-five percent is a part of lots?
Some of it is.
Well, that's actually a great question, because I guess in the staff's mind, when it says no more than, I think the development plan condition says seventy-five percent lot coverage. That means you would have to have at least twenty-five percent in green space. That couldn't be inclusive of parking.
Okay.
So it would be twenty-five percent of green spaces?
Yes. Under the current conditions as proposed.
Are they going to build sidewalks around each building?
No, don't know.
No?
We're, we're not sure.
Ted, if I may, could we go back and revisit the HOA or, let me ask, let me start here. Is your client opposed to an HOA? What I'm trying to figure out is, let's assume these are sold individually. Short of enforcement, how do we get uniformity, consistency, the same guy mowing the lawn, the, the property being maintained? Would you discuss with your client and see if there's a way to ensure that this property would be adequately maintained after the sale? Now, whether that be with an HOA, or if you have some other mechanism in mind, it would be great if we could address that.
Appreciate the point, and I, I need to speak with him because I haven't asked him that question, so I don't know the answer. So I can do that now, or take any other questions first?
I think you're going to have your engineer address the sewer issue.
He is. That was going to be the next in line, so, okay. Just take a couple minutes and talk to Mr. Gross. Wait for Ms. Clark, or go ahead?
It was her-
That's, that's not a problem.
So, Ted, while we're waiting for Ms. Clark to return, I don't mean to dribble these out one at a time, but I want to, I want to circle back to, you, you alluded to, you were going to show us a photo of, of a, of a building. And so, the other thing that we want to address, and I know you're about to address this, uh, uniformity in, in maintenance. Let's assume that they are sold individually. And one guy wants to build one bedrooms, and the other guy wants to build three bedrooms. Are these buildings, do they all look the same from the exterior? And how do you address that? And I think you were about to address that with this photo, but I just want to get some clarity on that. So I don't want to get ahead of your first issue, but that's one that we want to address as well.
Sure. So, as it pertains to the first question about a homeowners association, Mr. Gross is willing to, to agree and commit to a development plan condition that would require homeowners, or an owners' association across the, the property as a whole. So however we need to address that or, or get that into the record, we're willing to do that. And Mr. Gross is willing to agree to that on the record.
So that would be, if I may, Hamp, that would be a binding association, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It would be a condition.
We'll add that as a DPC, to the end of DPC, number three.
Make it a part of three. That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Moore. And Commissioner Graham, if you look at the last part of development plan condition, the last sentence of development plan condition number three, I believe as both as, as it's, as it's contained in your staff report, but also the revised, the revised set that I've submitted this evening, it has a statement that the residential structures on the property show have uniform plans with consistent inner complimentary roof lines and architectural details, such as columns, gables, railings, et cetera, that we submitted in, again, trying to meet the intent or the spirit of the, the structures as a whole being the same or similar in appearance and consistent in appearance across the property.
So how do we, so, I, I appreciate your intent. Logistically, what I'm trying to figure out is how do we, how do we convey that to?
You make them all two-bedroom?
Or do we have some floor plan to pick from? Because he's, he's exactly right. If they're, if they're all one bedrooms, it's not going to look like all three bedrooms.
Something to, we could consider could be a, a, a limit on the number of available floor plans?
If they were all, if they were all consistent, you could. That would, that would limit, that would limit the number, that would limit the selection for the buyer.
Again, I, I, let me talk to Mr. Gross, but I, I, I think we're all on the same page. It's just a matter of coming up with the type-
I think, I, I think we appreciate the intent. Logistically, how do we make that work? And that's the part that we want to address.
Let me have a moment. Mr. Starks? Sure, sure. And I, in, in anticipation that that might have been an issue, we, you know, we, we submitted the, the development plan condition to address that. But I understand and appreciate the additional points that you all are making. So, again, I think we're, we're willing to, to work to get to a meeting of the minds there. Let me double-check that with Mr., Mr. Gross.
All right. That's what I thought, and I want to make sure. And I know you're in my brain, work a lot of lots, because I know you know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for allowing me that time. Speaking with Mr. Gross, again, I think he underst, I think we both understand what we're trying to accomplish. We just need to figure out the best way to accomplish it. He is willing to agree to limit the, the, the buildings to, to containing only units of one- and two-bedroom apartments or residential dwelling units. I guess what I'm struggling with, and I'm, I'm even get, trying to get Mr. Lucas's input on it, and he and I are both having a hard time, is how do we? We want to address by way of a condition, your concerns about consistency in appearance and design. We're willing to do that. I guess what I'm looking for is some guidance on how exactly we accomplish that through a development plan condition.
This is, staff, want to try that first?
Oh, yeah, we can try. I think, can I have that back? I think there might be an example in this set that, um, we had, I pulled the conditions from Magnolia Hills, because I think that was one of the first multifamily developments with multiple lots. And I believe there's one in here about-
Will you read that?
The building question. Let's see.
If, just, just me thinking out loud here. Is it appropriate to ask the applicant to submit floor plans?
Or layout?
Or, or so that, it's the old picture's worth a thousand words thing. If you say you can pick one of these two, anyone who's trying to enforce that can later say, you know, which one of these doesn't fit. And now verbally, we could clearly do it, I, I suspect. Someone probably smarter than me could do it. Just, excuse me, just a thought.
I'll take a, take a stab at answering that, and then Hamp may need to add some, some further thought. Typically, what we've done, to my memory, is applicants have committed to certain uniform building materials similar to, to what we have presented, and then no more than X number of floor plans. I don't know that we've gone so far as to require a specific floor plan. And I guess, if I'm allowed to express my thoughts, I'm not sure we want to. Just, just because whatever we put into the, in the form of a development plan condition, then it would be up to staff to then monitor that, enforce that. And honestly, the only way to do that is through building inspection. And where, where we don't do building inspection, that's, that's up to the city or the county, be that Warren County in this case. So, little hesitant to go that far. But now, can you ask for that evidence? Absolutely. You have the full power to ask for additional evidence. And typically, when we are lacking something that we feel we need as a board, someone would, maybe we go through more of this hearing tonight. But if, then if you feel like that's appropriate, we could table that and ask them to bring more, more evidence back. So it depends on how, how far you, you would want to take that and how deep in the weeds you, you want to get. But, yes, you do have that ability to ask for that, that type of information. And I don't know if Hamp has anything else to add or not.
I don't. I think that's exactly right. One thing we haven't yet talked about is exterior, exterior, exterior maintenance. Who's going to mow the grass? Who's going to-
So that goes, that's something we will have to address with this, I keep referring it to as an HOA, but whatever that, yeah, whatever that mechanism is, we'll have that discussion here in just a moment. So, Rachel-
I might as well, I might as well just ask the, the other question that, although I think that has been discussed a little bit, is, is there any consideration to less units?
You don't have a mic, okay, okay. Yeah, okay. Did you get, misbalance, pull hers over a bit, all right?
Thank you. Mr. Volker, I just want to make sure Mr. Gross heard you. So he did. And at this point, he's, he's wanting to stick, he'd stick with the maximum of two eighty-eight in the revised conditions that we submitted this evening.
Ed, let me ask this. Would your client be willing to, to table tonight, bring us back a concept plan that we can, that we can see and understand? That concept plan would address number of bedrooms, sizes, that sort of thing. I, I'm not suggesting that that's your right, that's your correct move. But it's, it's, we still-
There's a lot of changes that we're doing on the fly here.
Yeah, and still tonight, we still even have to address how, what are we going to do with the HOA? We want consistently, we want the same people mowing it. We want the grounds to look, to look uniform. And so ideally, we wouldn't do all of this here. This is usually a one or two off-issue, and we've got a table full here.
Understand. I, can we put up one of the photographs, some of the photographs that I submitted? Let me, let me at least show you a photograph or two. And it, again, if we end up at a point where you still think it's advisable that we remedy some of these issues and come back, we will.
They're bringing that up. Let me bring up one other option. So technically, we have two motions tonight. And in the past, we've had applications where you hear the future land use map amendment first, and then the zone change. May have been a, a good thing to do tonight. So another option is at some point, you could call for a motion on the future land use map amendment and see if that passes. We still would have to go through the rest of the public hearing testimony. And then, then the zone change plus or minus follows. And I don't know if I, you, you'd rather-
But don't you, but don't you think, I mean, until you get a lot of these answers, I don't even think, I mean, is it not tough to cons? I mean, without some of these answers to, to, to-
It is, and without getting too deep into the weeds, this is, this is why we typically shy away from doing future land use map amendments. But we've talked about that in other, other realms and, and how, how that applies to our particular conference of plan. So yes, that's why we'll get through this testimony tonight, see what the applicant wants to do, see what you all want to do. But that would be an option as well, is to take part one first.
So Ted, this is, this is certainly a great-looking development. For projects similar to this, what we typically are going to see is a packet that's submitted that, that, that explains in details this, what this is going to look like. And with elevations, and certainly these photos are helpful, but what we're leery of is creating an enforcement nightmare. And so that's the part that we're trying to address. I think I understand your intent. I'm just trying to figure out a way to...
Are these pictures of what's next door to him?
Correct, yes, Commissioner Gay. So what you see here on the screen, these are, this is the property that's just to the west there of the, of the subject property. These, this is in essence what Mr. Gross intends to continue where the commission to approve the flume amendment and zone change. These are three units with, or three structures with eight two-bedroom units. The, what we're willing to submit to the commission tonight is that the units that are developed on the subject property will either be the same as these, or they'll be units with eight one-bedroom, structures with eight one-bedroom units, which will essentially look the same, they'll just be a little bit smaller in overall size. And if I need Mr. Lucas to, because I'm, I'm getting into the realm of talking engineering and architecture where, where, you know, he's an expert, but he has explained to me that at least in design and construction, they'll either be the same as these, which contain two-bedroom units, or they'll contain one-bedroom units, which will look the same except they might be a little bit, maybe longer, narrower in some areas, but generally appear the same.
Pictures, your arguments may well be persuasive, but they're not going to be binding and development plan conditions.
I guess that's what I, and to, to my point earlier, I'm, I'm, we're struggling with the way in which or the manner in which we can incorporate these as conditions on the development so as to make them binding. I think that's our intent, Mr. Gross, I started with Mr. Gross's intent. So, you know, if it's in the commission's...
I understand your intent.
Commission's opinion, we need to go back and, and sew some of that up before we come back.
I think the staff would be, and I don't want to speak for staff, they would be more than willing to assist to button this up, correct? What you're proposing, if you had that buttoned up, that, that's, that's a, that's vastly different than where we are right now. And in my view, it would help you.
I understand.
We certainly would like to see everything. We've made so many changes. I mean, I'm drawn and trying to, if we can get it in writing and see elevations, and I know I'm putting words in fads, but if we could see what you're talking about and what you're agreeing to, especially like the maintenance and all those kind of things all ironed out, it sure would make our flume decision and our zone change decision a lot easier.
I understand and appreciate the comments, and we'll be glad to do that. Let me, let me confirm with Mr. Gross that he's willing for us to table it this evening and, and come back on another day. Just let me make sure he's okay with that, if that's okay.
To the next meeting, that's what I...
That's what...
For a month away.
Okay.
I think it would just be, I think it would be a month, right? Because we're just new members, then we're doing, I think it's a month, because I, I don't really have to go out and represent the staff or anything, or just make a change and...
Exactly.
I think, but I'm still learning.
Yeah.
I'm still driving around looking at people. People probably think I'm crazy. How do you get out of this?
If he can take that gut punch, he can take it. Respect. Best. No, but he's the best. I've been with him 27 years. He's a...
We, excuse me, I'm going to call for a five-minute break, just have a little recess here while everybody kind of settles what they need to do. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being patient with me. So, I've spoken with my client, Mr. Gross. I think what, what we're going to have to do procedurally or technically, talking to Ben, we, we were initially wanting to request that it be tabled and then brought back before you all as a commission on July 1, which is not the next meeting, but the next. July 1 is when the new agreement with the various local and county and governments takes effect as far as the voting process. You all probably know way more about that than me. So it's my understanding that in order to do that properly, we would need to withdraw the application this evening and then have it re-advertized and set for a hearing anew on July, July 1. And in the interim, we'll get everything resubmitted, revisions and, and things resubmitted.
Ted, just for complete, full, transparent disclosure, what we're asking for is informational. It doesn't suggest that we would or would not entertain favorably or unfavorably your proposal. Just want to be, just want to make that clear.
And we were going to, Mr. Lucas was chomping at the bit to address the sewer issue this evening, but I, I told him we'll just hold off on that and do that July 1.
But give him more time to prepare, right?
So I thank you all for your consideration and worthwhile comments this evening. We appreciate it. Yes, sir.
So your request is to withdraw the application?
That's correct.
And withdrawal of the application does not need the commission's approval or a vote?
Thank you, sir, and thank you.
Thank you.
Just to, just to kind of put, try to put our arms around this, a couple of unknowns still out there. Not every city, nor I believe the fiscal court has had their second vote yet. So that, that's the reason with the withdrawal, so we still don't know for 100% certain what, what that new agreement, when that new agreement will be in effect. So we would have to withdraw, reapply, we'll re-advertize the whole nine yards, and then whatever the commission makeup is at that point in time, that's what, we'll, we'll hear that on July 1. So it's a little bit of a transition time to have, to have this happen.
Thank you. And that concludes the evening. Thank you all for the public hearings. Yes, sir. We have...
See you, everybody.
It was, it was good to see you all. Thank you all. That brings us down to discussion items, and I think we have...
Yes, ma'am. We do have personnel, quite a, quite a personnel packet before you... Yes, yes, please.
I think she's in the hallway.
Oh, I just... Oh, okay.
I'll go get her.
Thank you.
She's right here.
Oh, okay.
She's coming.
No, wait a second, till they clear out. We'll give them a few minutes to clear.